I'm going to go ahead and get started. I'm going to call this Saline City Council Work Meeting to Order at 6:02 PM. Members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, council members CO, Dylan, Girbaugh, McClellan, Mitchell, and Mayor Protem Tahar. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, clerk Royal, treasurer Bennett, and deputy treasurer McDonough. The rest of you who are in the audience this evening, we're glad that you were able to attend this evening. And if you'd be so kind to sign in in the back to my left, we would appreciate that. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
So.
Moved by Dylan as submitted, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you, seconded by councilwoman McClellan. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Excuse me, and the motion carries unanimously. The one discussion item this evening is the annual budget for fiscal year 18. Excuse me. There was a variety of support material provided in your packet that would have been delivered on late Friday morning. So hopefully you had an opportunity to review that. As has been stated in the past by city staff, this is round two. This is the second draft of fiscal year 18 budget. And I have to say, from my own casual observations, as someone who comes in and out of City Hall frequently during the week, I can attest to the fact that staff has worked diligently to prepare this budget over the course of many months. I'm also very pleased to say that it is a balanced budget, which represents a pretty significant paradigm shift from how our budgets first appeared when I was elected to council nearly eight years ago. And I also want to say that we have a tremendous team working to review and to make recommendations relating to our budget. I'm not really into tooting your own horn or self-aggrandizement, but I do want to give a lot of credit to treasurer Bennett and deputy treasurer McDonough because I think they're extremely competent and have worked very hard on this. So ladies, thank you very much. Here's how this is going to go down tonight, folks. Because we're dealing with the budget in its totality, and this is the first real thoughtful conversation we've had on the subject, I'm not going to be looking for consensus on the budget or any of the particular items. I'm going to let staff take as much time as they will consume to talk about the budget process and where we're at to date, and then we'll work our way around the table to address any questions and concerns that you may have. And of course, we will revisit this subject for probably at least the next couple of meetings would be my guess. So with that, unless there are any questions, comments, to me, I will turn it over to our city manager. Again, please remember, this is directed to both staff and council members, that when you talk, be sure to speak into the microphone, make sure the green light is illuminated at the base of the microphone, because we are recording this and I believe we are live streaming if that technology is working today. It is not, okay. Well, with that, Mr. Campbell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mayor Marl alluded, we are excited that we were able to present to you a balanced budget, which is very important to all of us, of course, and so we're very thankful for that. And certainly not without a, didn't come without a lot of heavy lifting and moving forward. But so again, I do want to also thank certainly Mickey Joe and Joanne for the heavy lifting, but all of our departments, all of, all the folks included in working on this, putting this together. So certainly it is a team effort. And so this evening, as Mayor Marl said, yeah, this is our initial rollout, as it has been in the past. And then depending on what questions your mayor, that may or not be able to be answered tonight and moving forward, you know, what it is that you may desire to see in addition for follow-up meetings, as well as, you know, typically also, as I like to call it, our big three at the next meeting typically we've had where we bring in our police, DPW, and Parks and Rec Center, because those comprise three of our biggest budgets. So without any further ado, unless there's questions or comments from me, I'm just going to turn it over to Mickey Joe and to Joanne.
Well, so this is, as the mayor alluded, round two. Round one starts early in December. Most of the department heads are asked to start giving us budget numbers, and those numbers are turned in in January. Joanne then crunches the numbers into the spreadsheet, and then we meet the, pretty much the entire month of March, we meet with each department and go pretty much line by line. The information that you received in your packet, this packet includes the general fund. We've talked about many of the different funds. There's the Water and Sewer Fund, the Rec Fund, the Street Funds. But what we're talking about tonight pertains explicitly to the general fund. And that's because the general fund is where our tax revenues and our state revenue are all recorded, and that's what, and that's the general operations of the city of Saline. So that's what we're going to be discussing tonight in its totality. So the biggest makeup of our revenue, obviously, is property taxes. I have to keep telling myself to slow down because I get on a roll and talk too fast, so don't hesitate to slow me down. And this year, as many of you know, with proposal A, we have a limit as to what we can cap. We've had some great increases in the property values in Saline, but with the taxable value cap, we had a .9% CPI. So we only increased those properties that did not transfer was only a .9% increase. And then, so that, when you have a .9% increase in your revenue, state revenue, the governor kept flat, so there was no increases in our state revenue. And then we have contracts for next year, and our expenses quite, didn't quite stay flat. So through the course of looking at some things, you can, Joanne has went through and put in some of the key factors of this budget. But before we get into that, I want to remind you all that with personal property taxes being eliminated, they have replaced that personal property tax with some, with some forms, formulas and stuff like that. And last year was the first year that we had the manufacturing equipment that came off. And as you may recall, in January, I think Todd forwarded a memo to me that said that we received, the state over calculated, and so they distributed excess funds to all the municipalities. Well, based on that distribution, this, the governor said, well, we're not, all these municipalities had these extra funds, we're not going to touch state revenue to the municipalities. So in my memo that I had addressed to Todd, we were going to keep that money in the fund balance in the event that, to help offset some of these other state revenue or state legislative changes, or if they weren't going to replace state revenue, that we could, you know, tap into that, those funds. Another expense that you may require, and we've had a lot of conversations about finances in the last couple of months, as you may recall, we had a conversation with MERS and our retirement pension. And MERS had discussed that they were going to, they had recently went through and reevaluated the actuarial. They changed the life expectancy of people, they changed the interest rates, and they changed some other things in their assumptions. And those assumptions were going to take effect with our fiscal year beginning this January, or July of 18, or 17 for fiscal year 18. So those numbers, for that actuarial change alone, was $154,000 annual, in addition to our annual increase. So what staff did to try to make the most of our money is what we proposed to do, is to take some of that excess revenue that we got for the personal property and prepay that actuarial change. Because as outlined in our fund balance, we said that if we have excess fund balance, we want to make sure we prioritize our pension liability. So if we took that and paid that this fiscal year in advance, hopefully we can capitalize on some interest, and then that would take that expense out of the FY '18 budget, and that significantly helped to close the FY '18 gap. So that is a proposed amendment for the FY '17 that will be coming forward in the next couple of meetings as well. We also had, in the original round, we had some equipment. Jeff Fordice spent a great deal of time looking at his Vector, and in the original cost, it was a $415,000 to purchase the new Vector. And then after him and his mechanic and everyone worked and talked about it, by the time you usually get those things paid off, they start caution you more. So they also researched leasing it with an option to buy it at the end of five years, and so that was a significant change that we had too. What we try to do is present a budget that says, these are your, your normal operating revenues, these are your normal operating expenses. We don't want to balance our budget on numbers that aren't consistent. So include, in these numbers, you won't see any land sales, though we have some pending sales contracts. We don't have any land sales in there because this is what we tried to do to balance this, to present it to you for the first time, is to show you that these are our normal revenues, these are our normal operating expenses. And with that, we still had a little bit of a gap, so we went through and took out some of the items that could be replaced, or that our equipment replaces, that aren't really what we would call normal operating expenses, like the software for the financial system. I mean, that's something we replace maybe once every 20 to 30 years. So we took that out, we took out the lift truck for the DPW, we took out the innovation money, and then we also took out a speed sign for the police department. He had two in his original budget. We locked one in and took one out so that we could close the gap and make a balanced budget, with the intent that when we amend the budget to reflect those land sales, we could put those back in, and we would still be able to, to have those one-time revenues offset those one-time costs. But at this point, in this budget that you're looking at now, this balanced budget, there have been some things that we've, like revenue that we have not recorded because we don't have it yet, and then expenditures that in, that we intend to input back in when we amend the budget for that. So just kind of briefly going through this, I wanted to go, if you look back at, Joanne has prepared, Joanne prepares this document, and she does a very good job at explaining on the back page, the footnotes. It's on page 26 of 26 in your handout. So she goes through and explains, you know, some of the bigger costs, and then where the money comes from. And as you can see, like items number two and three, it's a net effect on the budget. And a lot of that is because we are using TIF dollars, tax increment finance dollars, to help, to fund some of these projects. So I briefly wanted to go over what the, so we have different districts. It's the Tifa district, the LDFA 1, and LDFA 2. And I'm just going to, want to take one and hand it around. These are plans that we put in place that the city can capture dollars and the authorities of all the authorities. So we capture county dollars, we capture intermediate school, library dollars, and as long as those dollars go towards a project, we can keep them and fund them locally. Because the intent is, if it's good for Saline, it's going to be good for Washtenaw County, it's going to be good for ISD. So they've agreed to let us capture those dollars. So the document that you're, I'm handing out right now is our TIF plan, and you can see that this was recently amended, like two years ago. I'm not going to have you read that, but I thought it would be good for you to have. And then on the very back page, there's a map. Basically, the Tifa district is our, part of our Shelton Industrial Park in the orange, and then as they amended this, they added them, so they're in different shades, the orange, the pink, then there's some yellow. So any project in that area is eligible to receive money from Tifa. So you'll see money coming in as a, you know, money from Tifa into the general fund. And that's how we, how we determine that. You'll also see money coming back in from LDFA. And back when we were developing the park, LDFA Park is out, the industrial park, where Jag Products and then industrial. And when we were developing that park, general fund loaned and, well, we didn't loan, but we, we put the money and the investment into that park with the intent that when they started capturing money, they would pay back the general fund. And as some of you who've been on council may recall, we've been paying that back over the last couple of years. And this year, we upped it a little bit to pay it off because, to help close, to help close the gap. But the LDFA has the monies in there, and so we just put, we increased the amount from the prior year to help close the gap. Also this year, we have included money out of, in addition to what's in the general fund. You'll see that we are making a contribution to the EDC fund. The EDC fund is our Economic Development Fund. That basically is where we, where we pay for Ann Arbor Spark services, Saline Main Street services, and then any of the community events and things like that. So you'll see in the back there that there's a contribution to EDC. The majority of that is, like I just said, makes up for those expensive expenses. Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry, can you clarify? In the back there.
In the back there. You can't follow that? Okay. So what page is that, Joanne?
Oh, it's, it's the 24th, 26th.
So in the back, in the back here, on page 24 of 26, you'll see transfers out, you'll also see contributions and transfers to the component units. So that's where money is coming in and out to different funds. You'll see there that that's, we talked briefly last week, or I advised you briefly last week, you know, about, we adopted the FIRE budget, and you'll see where our tax portion that we're capturing, we've already anticipated that we're going to transfer that portion over to our FIRE special assessment, that's what that contribution to FIRE special assessment is. And then the municipal bond, and then the two that we contribute. So that's going out of this fund. These are tax dollars that we're contributing to other operating expenses. And then on the next line, downward, it says contribution to component units, you'll see that there's $41,500 going to the Economic Development Fund. And that Economic Development Fund, that 41-5 makes up our 20,000 contribution to Saline Main Street for this year, $8,000 for electric and maintenance, landscaping, cleaning the parking lots and stuff downtown, and then community events and Ann Arbor Spark to help with business retention. And they're a very good facilitator when it comes to incorporating MEDC to the businesses in our industrial park and, and things like that. So that's what that contribution is.
I'm so sorry.
No problem.
Can you clarify, so that line item on the bottom of page 24, under transfer component units, contribution from EDC?
No, it's, it's to, it's to EDC. It's not from. Yep. So general fund dollars for $41,500 are going to EDC.
All right.
It's going to be 20,000 towards Saline Main Street.
Okay.
About 8,000 for electrical lights in the parking lot, maintenance of the parking lots in that uptown.
Okay.
The community events, like Porta John rentals and stuff like that, that's our domination. And then $10,000 for our contract with Ann Arbor Spark.
And I, I'm sorry, for the sake of getting, how much is going to the community events?
Um, I think this year, we had, well, it's not just community events, it's also promotions and stuff like that, but in total, it's $4,000.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that. I just wanted the breakdown.
Now, in addition, we also, in our Tifa budget, and we talked briefly about Tifa and those tax dollars, so those monies are not intermingled into the general fund until we contribute it in. So anything that we're paying for out of Tifa is only coming in here under your revenue section, if it's coming into the general fund. But we have other expenses that we can use Tifa dollars for. And this year, we are going to use 35,000 towards, we're going to contribute that also to Saline Main Street for the Christmas decorations and, and hanging baskets. So in addition to the 20,000, we're contributing 35 from Tifa, so there'd be a $55,000 contribution to Main Street for this year.
I'll go to Main Street.
Yep. 10, 20,000 out of general fund dollars, and then 35 out of Tifa. Yes, ma'am?
Um, I, if I may, there are some, can you just, I think there are some limitations of how Tifa money can be spent.
Yes.
Can you just read?
Yep. So with our Tifa district, we are one of the unique communities that when we developed this agreement back in the early 80s, we developed it with the local units that we would never collect more than 40%. So we only collect 40% of those eligible tax dollars, and then they can only be spent towards designated projects. And those designated projects are in that plan document that I handed you. Each time the plan is amended, they go through different things and say, this is what we would allocate, you know, for those expenses. And it's maintenance of our downtown area, parks. So some recent projects, Joanne also produced this document. Joanne is a document-producing queen. But some of the projects that Tifa has funded in the past has been a good portion of the city's portion of the, the streetscape. They have helped with park structures and parking lot improvements in our parks, so and some other of the items that, that is on this list here. Streetlights, yep. Is that good?
Yes, yes, thank you.
So, yep, go ahead. So then at the end of the fiscal year, we have to take anything we've captured, all the revenue, and we evaluate, you know, say, this is how much we had, and if we don't have a project going on or anything, we have, we return those dollars back to the units. So it's not like we're sitting on it and just holding on to it. Each year, we have to return the dollars that were not used for specified projects. And that's part of the, you know, we do that at the end of the year when we do the audit.
So, and then, I believe there was just recently a change made having to do with libraries. Did that actually happen and would affect how much, how much magnitude of the funds would have gone?
I'll take a shot at that. So in our, in our instance, it shouldn't have an impact on us because of the ongoing debt that we already have, as well as the, the restatement of the plan that Mickey Joe mentioned that was done, I think, two years ago. Is that right?
15.
About two years ago. So, so, yeah, it should not, it shouldn't impact us at least for quite some time, if at all.
Thank you.
Ms. Bennet, please continue.
That is pretty much what I have. Unless you have specific questions about stuff in there, I thought at that point, we would kind of go over what I feel, you'll see also in Joanne's memo, she has some of the proposed FY '17, and she explains in there about that MERS pension. But we will present, you know, we'll present an amended FY '17 budget to you, but we wanted to kind of address that issue too, because it is a significant amount of money. It was $154,000, but 114 of that comes out of the general fund because we estimate, and I'm going to, I'm going to say estimate, those retirees that have already retired, those retirees that are currently working, and to what departments they worked or are working, and then we allocate those costs per, you know, we try to figure out which department, so that general fund isn't paying for people who worked in the water department or people who worked out at the rec center. So out of the, the total cost is 154, 114 came directly out of the general fund, because the majority of the employees are funded by general fund dollars.
One more question, because I wonder if there's a lot of shifts between the components or is that going to be the distribution?
Component unit?
Yeah, originally FY '17 budget, we did it, I distributed the pension cost for the retirees to the departments that they worked in within the general fund, but we have a retiree fringe line that we put the healthcare for retirees, for general fund retirees in. So to be consistent, we're going to just put retiree cost for general fund people in the admin line. And then, and same in the other funds. So like the Water and Sewer will have a, a cost for their retirees that'll roll into admin, so that it's separate from their active employees, so you can see sort of like what your retiree costs are actually. So the FY '17 is being taken out of those various departments and putting into admin, you know, for net effect. Plus, we're adding 114,000 for the.
The variable shows.
Right, because then if you look at 18, I've got the, you know, the total retiree cost in the admin line, so.
Treasurer Bennett, anything else you want to add?
I can't.
Ms. McDonough?
Did you want to talk about the assigned fund balance, the excess?
Well, it's after what we've done.
Okay. Do you want to talk about it? Okay, so we had received from the state for the personal property reimbursement that we've talked about at the beginning of this conversation, we received $603,000. Out of that, we had budgeted, well, we had an adjustment from the prior year that they also invoiced us for, because there was a SNAPU in the calculation sheet, and so they took back $4,000. And then we budgeted 259, so we had, and we had over $300,000, but after we take out that 114 from the general fund, we'll have another, we'll have $224,683 left that they gave us this year, that we will, I mean, I would recommend that we keep it, we've set up a fund balance.
We assigned the fund balance, so letting it fall into unassigned, we would restrict it, while not restricting it to legislative changes, still not knowing going forward how they're going to cut back on some of their.
That seems, that seems pretty logical. I would hope that there are no objections from the.
So the excess doesn't, excuse me, the excess isn't falling into unassigned.
Right.
So you won't see a swing in that, if it's falling into.
Restricted. Okay, very good. Ladies, thank you. I'm going to actually get to you, I'm going to start with you, Ms. Mitchell. Anything else? Good? Thank you very much. That was very thorough. So just a reminder, two weeks from tonight, we will have Police Chief Renick, Director Fordice, and Director Scruggs here to, to go over thoroughly their portions of the budget, which have the, the biggest impact on our, on our financial liabilities. And so I bring that up to encourage you, if you have questions specific to their budgets, you're welcome to, to address them and articulate them this evening, but it may be more appropriate to do it in two weeks when they're present and may, will be able to address your questions and concerns. We have plenty of time this evening, so take as much as you wish to consume. And I will start with our newest member, kind of baptism by fire here. But I know you take this issue seriously, and you've spent a lot of time this weekend going over the numbers and the spreadsheets that are provided. I'll begin with you, Ms. Mitchell. Again, be sure to speak into the microphone, and we will follow your comments by transitioning to councilmember CO, then Mr. Girbaugh, councilwoman Dylan Tahar, and then certainly last, but last but not least, councilwoman McClellan. So Ms. Mitchell, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I appreciate the amount of work that went into this, and I appreciate that we have the time to ask these questions. I actually would, just then, just wanted a point of information, when you were talking about, we got that $630,000 from the state, and you were tossing around some numbers, and I missed some. So I just, I don't know if you have that written down somewhere, did I miss it?
It was not in the packet.
Okay.
It's not in the packet, and I will.
So you can clarify with me later.
Yep, I'll, I'll send them out.
Okay.
I'll send it out with the breakdown.
Okay, thanks. And then I'll, I'm actually going to pass on questions for now.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll do a second round round, so if some come up in the, in our reading time, we'll be happy to take them with lots of questions. Mr. CEO?
Actually, I, having participated in the budget process for a number of years, excuse me, while working for the city, I understand the work that went into this, and I definitely appreciate from not only you, Mickey Joe, and you, Ms. McDonough, but you as well, Todd, the amount of work that you folks have done to bring to us a balanced budget this year. I know in years past, when I was sat at the table with you discussing what was and was not going to go into the budget, some of those were tough discussions. And I assume that they haven't gotten all that much easier. I hope it's eased somewhat, and I again, like Ms. Mitchell, have no real specific questions at this point, but I just want to thank all of you for the hard work. want to thank all of you for the hard work you do to put this together and bring it to us. Thank you.
Mr. Gierbach.
Oh, we all know me.
I'm getting a sheet of paper.
Getting my accounting hat, shade on and everything else, but, no, looking at everything, I think for us, I think a little more understanding of how the changes have occurred with personal property tax, legislative aspects that have changed, and figuring out where it all falls out this year. For me, I just have a couple of questions about certain areas, and looking at revenue and so forth. One of my things, and you've already answered it, was about the personal property tax and how that's all played out. When you mentioned that we were having more transfers coming in, or raising our transfer coming in from the LDFAs. The LDFAs. Thank you. My question for that one is, do we have any anticipated contingencies or things that we may have to hold back funds for at some point? Or do we feel that we're comfortable now in terms of? My concern is that we wouldn't have funds there to repair a road, or to do an initial redevelopment of property or something if we don't have.
Okay, so, two things you just talked on probably need a little bit more explanation, so I'll get to your answers. But, so, the personal property tax elimination, when I mentioned two hundred and fifty-nine thousand is what we received, that's just in the general fund. A majority of our personal property that is being eliminated is in our industrial parks, so it is being captured by those districts. I talked about the Tifa district and the two LDFA districts. So, they're getting reimbursed, so there's money going back to them. It was when we calculated the personal property tax reimbursement that we realized, because we had a couple filed late at the board of review that we made adjustments for, and that impacted us and opened the gap a little, we started bleeding again. And that's when we said, well, LDFA, for the LDFA two, you have to be eligible manufacturing. Now, we all know that out in that park, we've got a storage unit, we've got professional office buildings, we're now gonna have a hotel and a car wash. So, we do not capture any taxes on those properties that are not eligible manufacturing. So, from the point where the manufacturing starts, so, you know, jack products, that drive, condat, and those, any, any projects in that area would be eligible for funding. So, street funds for that portion of it, for anything coming up. And that is in our capital improvement, that section of road is in our capital improvement plan for. But, there's also some grant money, but we, we are keeping a fund balance available for that, to cover that. But, that's when we, when we made that adjustment, that's when we said, well, LDFA two could, you know, contribute a little bit more to help close that gap, and we'd still have enough there for that portion of that park that would be eligible for those dollars for, because really out there, it's gonna be street, you know, money, those kind of projects, they would be.
Well, that's it, and the restricted funds, to make sure that those are being used up first before.
Right.
The whole repayment so far is in the assigned fund balance, that's probably.
Still. And that's kind of my concern, is that as we move forward in the future, accounting for that money eventually.
Right, we are counting two hundred and fifty thousand each year, and a whole amount in twenty-one.
Yeah, okay. That's a question.
The other one, just looking at permits and timing, are we anticipating any fee revisions happening for our permits? After we talked about the whole aspect of continuing our approach on how we're handling building and services and inspections and so forth, it was clear that our fees are not necessarily concurrent with what our actual operating costs are at this point. I know we're getting the benefit of more permits and everything that we issued, but it's really paying for fees we set up from years ago.
Right, we recently reviewed the water and sewer connection fees, and those are, as approved by you guys, coming into play. As far as the building permit fees, that'll be done, they'll be reevaluated when we do the fee book, which, I don't remember what time of year, but this is based on the current fees and the anticipated cost.
Yeah, that's one thing that I would like to make, I guess, I know there's concerns about new structure, but the fact that we have to cover these costs, I want to continue subsidizing. The other one, looking at, we've already mentioned the issue about the LCSa acronym you've been using for that offset from property taxes. The equipment rental, can you just clarify me how that works? Is that us just paying ourselves back through our own?
So, as I mentioned, we have the different, we have major streets, local streets, rec center, and so, the, the equipment rental is for those other authorities, for those other departments that are outside, they pull, they put money towards the general fund for the operation and maintenance of those fleet. Because, the mechanics time and the purchase of those equipment come out of the general fund. So, as they are used, and it's done, our Department of Public Works has a very complicated accounting system for their time and their equipment. So, when they go out in the morning, they have to account for the minutes they're working on a water line, the minutes they're working on a sewer line, or they're in a parks, because they're all funded by different entities, you know, they're either set by water and sewer rates, or general fund dollars. So, at that time, they also track their equipment, and we take those costs, and we prorate it, and then we decide, out of the total expenses for that vehicle, and each vehicle has a classification, the cost that that operate, our operate cost was, we divide it out, and that's how much that each of those other funds pay back into the general fund. And the same thing, you'll see in there, there's an administration, and it's the same thing, because obviously, Joanne's doing, you know, the paperwork for all those rec center, water, sewer, we're cutting checks for all of them, the payrolls all coming out of the general fund operation by general fund employees. But, we allocate the percentage of time that we're doing, or how many checks we're cutting that are water and sewer and rec and stuff like that. So, the administration and the motor pool are reimbursing from those outside funds back into general fund to help offset our cost.
So, the equipment rental is just an internal rebuilding of our.
The simple answer is yes.
I just wanted to make sure, I didn't know if you were using some more equipment and leasing it to other.
No, it's all internal.
One other thing, I noticed our fines were down for, our fines were down, and so, I didn't know if that was a result of our having the opening. You just seemed, I didn't know what that was associated with. Last police inspector gives exactly what I'm on the court. And according to.
No, if you're looking at fines and court cost, the, on page two, the second one, the thirty thousand, is that what you're looking at, Dean?
Very.
Yeah.
So, the fines and court cost, those are what we get from the Washington County as part of, probably Jack answers this better than I do.
Percentage of, to get, another cost coming back. It seems that everywhere at forty, forty-one, five, then dropped to thirty-five, and now we've checked thirty thousand, so.
That's a question for your police chief.
Yeah, and that third one, is a, with the inspections.
Yeah, the building inspectors under several.
I think he's. And I looked at cable TV, and part of that is, I think, you can see where potentially our, it's being offset, the fact that I think less people are using cable as much, because I don't see a huge increase happening in that, even though our, the fees have gone up.
Yeah.
Oh, the other one, a couple other questions, just for, this may come up later, as the mayor said, looking at the budget for the clerk in terms of elections, are we gonna have to pay for any new machines or anything that we don't anticipate as a result of?
I'll defer that to the clerk.
We found out that the, the state is going to be purchasing most of our equipment, our new equipment that we will be getting in, hopefully before July first. We do have some money set aside this year for new equipment, but we're not sure how much extra stuff we're going to need to go. They're going to cover the machines, but there's going to be extra batteries and items that we're gonna need that they aren't gonna cover.
Consumables, but we're gonna actually get the equipment paid for by the state.
For the most part, yes.
And I think a couple other items were the drug forfeit sure money.
Can you list what we, so that I can tell?
I'll have to, I was making my notes, and I had them on my list, I didn't notify them on that one. There were drug forfeiture.
Three.
I figured Joanne's heart. What actually is that?
Well, nothing's actually in there, they're all zeros.
But, we did.
There was something where it dropped.
So, in the, so, the fund balance may be on the back.
Yeah, we did collect money a couple of years ago.
Right, so.
With the fund balance for the sixty-four hundred dollars.
It was, it was after its time in the evidence room, there was some cash turned in, but because it was related to drug forfeiture, it has to be reserved. So, we put it in here, whatever year that was, and restricted it over there, but then if they spend it towards whatever they're eligible to spend it for, that's when we reduce it.
So, it's not something that happens every year?
No.
Okay.
Another good question for.
I don't want to steal the police chief's thunder, but generally, what happens is, units that participate in drug enforcement activity share in whatever recapture there is, if they take a car as part of a drug bust, or take a, actually a residence or cash, that's distributed among the units participating in that kind of drug enforcement activity. And it's specifically reserved for the furtherance of drug enforcement.
So, that'd be the question to ask the chief, as to what's happening. It's coming here, forget it. And then, the only other thing was, I was curious about how the people's parking lot became a priority this year for Tifa, because I hadn't heard that discussion really.
I'd be happy if I could. So, you may recall, that discussion had been had a couple times, I believe, during the two oh seven Monroe property purchase redevelopment, in that because that parking's gonna go away, and one of the, one of the thoughts was to use part of, or all of those proceeds potentially to help construct a parking lot, would be on the south side, near the basketball courts. So, so, there would be parking for that, for that.
Using Tifa funds to develop that, and then saving the funds that we buy from the sale to use for general fund purposes.
Correct.
Just a switch of monies, okay.
Correct.
Okay. And then, the last question was cemetery water lines, I just wasn't sure, I thought there were some other priorities in terms of repaving, unless that's happening even this year.
I think the, the streets, or the paths for the cemetery, the bids are supposed to be coming in this next week, so that's gonna happen.
Still in this fiscal year, in the next year.
Actually, that'll be discussed at the upcoming cemetery work task force.
Those are the RFPs.
Just overall, I know you've worked really hard on this and brought it forth, I think for us maybe is looking at, and you've already done it, and even looking at the projections and that father, the sheets, that's basically the last sheet when you start doing out, in the out years, it's really understanding what we anticipate as being our really true recurring income versus what's on time money that are coming in right now at this point, so to understand, because I think that's where we're gonna be hurting, if we don't see something coming more from the state. We can't, we can't raise any more revenue than we're always gonna, even though I know our construction projects are assisting us, but I just think that's gonna be a bigger issue for us.
Joanne, in your projections out there, what did you, did you project for state revenue?
What was your crystal ball?
I think that like every two years, like a two percent increase, which is what they have been doing, you know, they were consistent from year to year. And I think the property taxes is minimal, I think I was generously gave two percent, like, two years out from here, hopefully, it's like, it's as high as that, but we've got more things coming out on the tax roll with the new construction, so hopefully it'll pick up steam that way as well. But, yeah, very little increase in state revenue at this point.
Thank you.
Please. Just my humble opinion, but I think this is the governor's way of, you know, because the, the revenue source for the personal property reimbursement brought in way more than what they had anticipated, or at least what they told us they anticipated, that they're able to justify by saying, well, instead of increasing state revenue sharing, we'll just, you keep that money, and then they'll keep our, they won't increase our revenue sharing. That's unfortunate, I mean, I could be wrong, but that's just, again, as I said, that's just my humble opinion, and that's how they, I mean, that's how they've been balancing their budgets, right, for the last, since two thousand two, is on, on the backs of municipalities. That's why it's somewhere around, they owe, you know, quote unquote, owe municipalities somewhere north of seven billion dollars since two thousand two. So, that's just, I just want to throw that out there, that I think, I mean, that's another piece, to your point, Mr. Gierbach, that we need to be thinking about, that they're gonna continue, the state legislature's gonna continue to do what they do to balance their budget. And one last item, some of you all have been to some MML conferences and seminars and have seen that, where out of fifty states, we're the only state where the state legislature has not increased monies to the municipalities. They have actually decreased, and it's frustrating and sad, because it's, it's not just the municipalities, it's our residents that end up suffering too, so.
Mr. Gierbach, anything else, sir?
I believe so, I think I can right now.
Excellent, Ms. Dillon.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is an awful lot of information to digest in three days, so, most of my questions are sort of surface questions at this point. I'm gonna start with something really basic, which is, do we have a catalog that lists everything that's in the description as to what these things are, like IFT clawback? I mean, is there any place that we're gonna find the information of what that is and what that entails?
No, you'll have to ask. Do you want the answer?
He is.
It'd be in the agreement.
Right, so, an IFT clawback, and we have had a number, I don't wanna say a number, a handful of these over the course of my time here at the city. But, in the event that, Diggy Pod, I think, was our most recent one, in the event that we've issued an IFT, and they, we have a ten-year IFT where we're abating their taxes at fifty percent for ten years, and they leave in year five, the clawback is in the agreement that says, well, you didn't meet the terms of your agreement, so for those five years that you were here, we're gonna go back and assess those at the full rate. So, we're basically taking away their IFT if they don't stay for the length of time that we granted it. So, in that term, that's when that revenue comes in. But, we have none anticipated, and we hope that that stays at zero.
Oh, no, that's good, it's just, that was just one of the.
Yep.
Right there.
No, and these descriptions are, these are descriptions of what we try to, to try to explain as well as we can in a limited computer field.
Right, that's why, and sometimes it's not knowing what the acronym is.
Right.
And that sort of thing, so you may get a list of those from me.
Okay, that's fine.
Couple of things, on page three, there's a footnote fourteen, but there is no footnote fourteen in the back.
Yeah, Brecken Park Place Structure?
It should be thirteen, eh?
It should be thirteen, okay.
So, it's probably the same page as.
Yeah, it's mentioned twice.
Page, oh, I changed it on page twenty-three, it's changed to thirteen, I did change for every side.
Okay. So, it should just be a thirteen, okay. And then, based off of that, that talks about cares. Do we know, cares has got what, two years left, correct?
That's correct.
Yes. So, are we anticipating anything beyond those two years, forecasting, or are we just?
We only.
This is what we, I guess, already submitted for, and have to end the award.
That's okay, I just wanna make sure.
If I could, Ms. Dillon, I believe that there, the school's deciding on that, whether or not to put it, put it up early, like in this coming November, as opposed to next November, I don't know all the details, but, but that's my understanding, that the, the hope is that it would go, go forward.
Okay, thank you. And, there's two separate line items for the drug task force, I think. There's one on page three, and then there's one like way back on the bottom of another page. It's like, you know, like, arts and culture.
What was the expense?
Okay.
One's revenue, one's expense.
Okay. So, then, we received a. So, then, we received a donation. Okay, I'll figure that part out. Like I said, it's just a little overwhelming, kind of trying to figure out and going back and forth. Most of my other questions, I'll be honest, come from your little, your handy dandy cheat sheet, which is on purchasing new vehicles. Have we always purchased new vehicles versus doing just mileage reimbursement?
Well, the-
For these staff vehicles?
Well, that's part of a-
I know, but is there, I mean, what's the cost benefit for going either way?
Right, we're very minor, because typically speaking, the amount, whether it's the MyDeal, or actually, I think it's, not Oakland County, but which other county right next to it, McComb, thank you. Typically, McComb bids are even better than the state bid, so, but it's extremely economical to purchase those vehicles. And typically, you have them for ten or twelve years for the passenger vehicles, for instance, or the pickup trucks. In some cases, some of the tractors and such are even, you know, a lot longer than that. But, so, while it's not, typically, in the past, we've utilized the, utilized the purchasing, because Gaye said it tends to be more economical to do that, because of the, such the significant increase in prices and the cost that we can probably get.
Okay.
I think you were asking a question.
We-
I guess what I'm trying to figure out is why we're buying staff vehicles. Are they using them that much?
So, by staff vehicles, that's the, so that's for our building inspector, that is out multiple times during the day, use, making inspections and code enforcement. And then, it would also be, we use those vehicles for banking. We use those carts, those vehicles for conferences and training, so that we're not paying, so yet, they are used-
Assessing uses and-
Assessing uses them when they go out. So, it's not specific to just one person. It's a, it's a car that sits and, that doesn't sit, but is here and is available when we have to go to, you know, to meetings and conferences, and to especially building department, because that vehicle is used every time they go out and do a building inspection. It's used for IT, when he goes up to the rec center or water treatment plant. So, it is used on a very regular basis by more than just one person.
And we did actually, do you remember, Mayor, because I think when, shortly after you, that was one year, I think you pushed for that. We reduced the number of staff vehicles by a fair amount, significant number of cars or vehicles. Not a lot, I mean, we didn't have a lot to begin with, but, but some days, some days, it may look like they're not being used, but most days, they're out and being utilized at various parts of the day, and so-
This isn't for a staff, these are staff vehicles for everyone to use.
Right, right.
Fleet cars.
Fleet.
Okay, that's fine. As long as they're fleet cars and not for individuals.
Nobody's buying the car. I can't squeeze the numbers that tight.
You know what? I have some other questions, but I think I'm going to hold off until we do the introductions and do them that way for those.
Very good. Mayor Portem to heart.
Thank you. Well, most of, most of the not-so-many questions I had have been answered either by your introduction or other questions. So, this is, I think there's only one well-known, too. So, I noticed in a couple of places, adjustments on the, on the positive side to the city in some, for example, in the courts department and in the building department. I'm assuming that was because of retirements and savings. Is that, is that correct? Okay. Yeah. And then, just, it's a tiny amount of money, but I know, looking at the, this is on page seventeen, the items for Renshler Farm, do you anticipate that any of the costs for operating Renshler Farm will change because of the possible move to the farmer's market out there? I mean, it would be a tiny amount of money, I would assume, so it's not-
Nothing, yeah, nothing was, in the budget, as it was presented to us, nothing was discussed about any increase. Might, maybe a question for Jeff?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We talked about it, we, the historical board talked about it, but they don't anticipate it. We were told that really, they're not going to do anything unless we have some issues with parking, which may be smaller time or something. But that would be the only thing that-
Okay. So, utilities. I was thinking like utility cost, but-
I mean, if they plug in out there, it'll be part of that, but we don't have to ever bill that out or something. It might be a few hundred dollars or something.
Okay. And then, related to that, one last thing. So, I noticed, pre, percentage-wise, large increase in repair and maintenance, this is on page eighteen, repair and maintenance line for the depot. Is that for, I guess it would, again, be a question for Jeff, but for projects, a particular project?
Yes, a debt that he's going on, I think this year, there was-
There was a new furnace.
New furnace.
Yeah, so, yeah, there were a couple, you know, projects came on.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Jeff would be able to give you details on that next, next one as well.
Okay, thank you. And thank you very much for all your work on this.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. Mrs. McCall.
Yeah, I think most of my questions have been answered. I have a do, a couple of small things that I think probably are for Jeff, like the increase on the signs for the historic district. Does that mean that the historic district signs will get painted? I don't know, that's probably a Jeff question.
Yeah, I think, we talked, Jeff and I talked about that, because they are looking long in the tooth a little bit, so.
Yeah, actually, when I had a meeting with Mr. McCall, we shared. We can move back pedisically to get it painted.
You're so bold, that's what that was about, so. And I think, I think all my other questions were actually answered already, so, and I appreciate all the work, because I'm not a numbers person, so, and this makes it readable for me. I appreciate it.
Okay. Joanne does a very good job of telling me that. She does a good job of that.
Well, let me say this. I don't have any questions at this time. The questions that I would ask, it seems to me that would be more appropriate to, to express those to Director Scruggs, Director Fordyce, and Chief Rennick, when they appear in two weeks. Let me just say this, and I don't want to beat this dog to death, because I think every one of my colleagues has said something similar, but while this is a lot of information, and while it can seem overwhelming, there's a lot of specifics, a lot of details that need to be conveyed. And ladies, I want to give you, you know, some kudos for condensing it and making it very, very accessible to somebody who's more of a novice. I can remember a time when we were just inundated with papers and memorandums, and it almost seemed that the intent was to confuse more than to inform. And so, I think this is a, as I said earlier, a pretty significant paradigm shift. You've done a lot of work. You've conveyed it in a straightforward, accessible manner, and I appreciate that. And I look forward to continuing conversations about our FY eighteen budget. Again, remember, we will be discussing this at a working meeting beginning at six P.M., two weeks from this evening. I did indicate earlier, and we've got ample time, so let me actually start again with Councilwoman Mitchell. Do you have any additional questions at this time?
I do. So, I, I tried to just go through and note anything that was increasing a little bit, kind of consistently. So, I'm looking for an example to give you. So, for example, I'm on page thirteen. I'm trying to figure out what account this is, for benefit of our audience. I don't know what account that is. It's a, it's an expense listing. So, the second from the top line item, printing and publishing, can you talk about those fluctuations and, and maybe what, kind of give me the history, would you mind, please?
So, this is, so the, the line item, so we're on page thirteen, printing and publishing.
Yes, ma'am.
So-
And that's for expenses of-
Proposed of two thou-, two thousand five hundred dollars?
For DPW, yeah.
Page thirteen is police.
Oh, for police. Okay, so I should ask this question. Well, was kind of, across the board, it looked like there were administrative costs that were going up pretty consistently.
Like the printing and publishing and things like that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. They would almost have to be addressed individually by department. Each department has their own printing and publishing line item, so that one that you just pointed out, three hundred, that's specific to the police department. And I would not even be able to begin to tell you what he has in those numbers.
Right, so-
I mean, I could if I looked it up, but-
Oh, I see, okay.
Well, they have a good lot of hires last year, so they're made print.
Yeah, for upwise.
Probably why it was, the forty-six hundred, that's in the year-to-date on that page, there's a twenty-six hundred dollar error. That's going to be moving to another.
Oh, that would help explain, yeah, that was an anomaly, okay.
Yeah, we're not increasing it. There's no adjustment to FY seventeen to bring it to forty-six, because it's not going to be that high. There's adjustments that are going to make.
So, is it appropriate to ask you on page seven, a question about the assessor department? Is that something you can answer?
We'll try.
Or is it better to ask that of-
We'll try.
Okay. So, under assessor department on page seven, it's maybe six up from the bottom postage. So, I'm just looking at the increase, it's a dramatic increase, say, from two years ago.
Yeah. So, two years ago, most of the postage costs for most of our departments were discharged to general administration. And then, when we started, each department had, like Catherine, the assessor, sends out the assessment notices and personal property notices and stuff like that. She was negotiating that on her own, and she knew what the dollar amount would be, so we started putting it in our own individual budgets.
Okay, so that, that changes a more accurate accounting. This is an effort to show where the buckets of money are coming from and going to. Okay. And then, I think in general, as far as budget, I think the thing that would help me, and I am really new to this whole process, and I've, I've dealt with budgets, but just not quite this many buckets. I, I think something like a dashboard approach would help me. So, somebody said, you know, this is really granular data or something, and it, I think having a little bit of a bigger picture will help me as far as we have discussions coming up, as far as bonds and rec centers and wastewater treatment plant, even with some key economic indicators for our city. And, and having an idea of those numbers coming down the pike would be really helpful for me. And I wonder if you would consider making some presentations?
I think we should probably talk and see what you're, you know, I'm sure we can, we can try to pull it together.
Yeah, just to make it more accessible.
Yep. We're always open to how, I mean, because everybody gets it a different way. So, we're always willing to try to figure out what it's going to take to get it, so.
I really do think that.
I'd like to be able to see what you're talking about and talk to you about.
Sure, yeah, thanks.
Mr. Seo, anything at this time?
I have no specific questions. I know that the vagaries of the budget from year to year sometimes occur, because one year, there may be a restriction that allows, or that causes people to put off purchase of new law books or whatever, to distribute to all the officers. And they say, "If you can hold off till next year, when it appears that we're going to have a better fiscal picture." So, then, some of those larger expenditures all of a sudden hit the books, because people put them off from previous years. Or, some new law has changed and requires some new training or some new something, some new form. Who knows? Sometimes, those things hit the budget in perhaps a non-explained manner. Sorry, I'm not trying to steal your thought.
Thank you, Mr. Seo.
That was a good question.
Any additional questions, Mr. Gearbock?
Just real quick, and I'll be kind of brief. I noticed, I forgot to ask the question about the reimbursement from the schools for eighty-four thousand dollars for this new line item on page-
That is, so, in the expenses, we've included a school resource officer, and I think Todd can probably elaborate more on that, but that would be the amount that the school would reimburse us for that position, if that is to go forward. It's included, but it's not, mayor may not have it.
Do we have any other new positions identified in here?
Well, as far as just the SRO officer, quick, you may recall, Superintendent Grayden came a few months ago, or a number of months ago now, to council and to talk about that possibility. I know they're still working through that as a possibility, where they would, if it does come to fruition, it would, they would pay seventy-five percent of the cost. So, there would be, and then, because we'd have to fill that, because we're not a large enough department, right, where they, we can just have someone as an SRO officer and not worry about losing coverage on the, on the road. So, that would be a cost-neutral, as council, of course, talked about, to go forward with that. So, they're, they're still working on their, on their end for that. And the, the second question, I'm sorry, was-
Are there any other new positions?
Um, I think we, we talked about the-
Not in police?
No, not in police, but I'm talking about the co-
In general, in total.
Right.
In general, there is, in the, in my department, in the treasurer's office, we are looking at, well, included in here is ten thousand dollars a year for a co-op position, but that's- Yeah.
No, I just wanted to make sure on that. The only other-
Well, the building inspector, but that's not a new position. It's replacing a retirement.
The cop, the police officer one was the only one I thought was new. Yeah, my concern on that one will be more with the chief, when we talk about that in terms of overall costs and legacy costs that we could inherit. Cable TV. I know the budget's there and everything, and it's an issue again. I don't know what we need to do, but either we need to hold money back or fix this problem with having a live broadcast, because if, and then, the other piece is, I would like to see what the overall operating budget is for cable TV in total between the school and us, because that's a significant source that we continue to pass through to them. I'm not seeing a lot of benefit from it at this point, in terms of what we see on cable TV and so forth.
So, you may recall as well, forty percent of the peg fees actually is, goes, goes to the attorney, the, the firm that represented us when we filed suit against Comcast back in, I think it was 'oh-eight. We did it on contingency, and because peg fees cannot be used for administrative costs, it's bricks and mortars-type costs, that we, we actually switched up the, made some modifications to the formula that we were paying from the franchise. So, we took that money out of the, reduced the amount of the franchise fees that we were paying to the schools, and used that to pay the, the contingency fee to the legal firm, excuse me, and then filled that hole with the, with the peg fees, which saved subsequently, whenever we needed any equipment that involves airing the, airing the city council, live streaming or taped. They have, have, they have said, yes, they will pay for it out of those peg fees. So, so for instance, the peg vault back there that kind of runs everything, that, that was new, I think, last year. And I think, I believe we're going to have new cameras this coming year possibly, that are, the ones that are on now. So, but the one thing, and I'd like to share your frustration with, with the on-stream, the live on-streaming, or live streaming, I should say, you also may recall, the schools are running their broadband right by us this summer. It's part of one of their, their bond projects, running it down from the middle school down to Pleasant Ridge. And so, they, at no cost to the city, will connect the city, and that will, at, at least, the first step would be that, the only thing that would be included on that would be the live streaming, but that, then, the issues we're having now go away.
Because I, I mean, in total, we're getting about two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars coming in, of which only a hundred-and-twenty-nine is going to the schools? Or, how is that, why not?
I see the forty percent that you mentioned, there's seventy-six thousand dollars that is identified as a franchise. And then, there's the peg fee of forty-four percent, which is a hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand. And then, we have an attorney component that's twenty-seven thousand.
Right. And then, the other thing that, that staff's working on with the city attorney's office is that, that the franchise and peg agreements are up in September this year. And so, we're starting, we started a couple of months ago, working on, on that renewal. And that, so that forty percent then, that's currently being paid to the attorneys, that falls off to them and would come back to the city.
It just seems like we're paying a lot for legal fees to maintain the hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars.
That was part of the agreement. That'll be going away and just with this.
And then, the last thing, just real quick, Renshler Farm, we, as you mentioned, the issue about the, and this may be more for Jeff, but we've replaced the furnace at the depot, which was forty years old. I think the one out at the- at the depot, which was forty years old, I think the one out at the farm is at least that, if not more, and it's a mammoth thing, so the issue I'd like to look at is the idea, just from my own perspective, of energy efficiency and the replacement cost of a new one, and that'll be something, but I think that's the other aspect that we need to look at, if we're gonna maintain our museums and some of these other things, there's aspects of that I think could pay for themselves if we look forward to that, and so this is one of the items, I hope Jeff will look at this here.
Thank you, Mr. Gierbaum, is there any other questions?
You know what I do, I've got two really quick ones, on page seven, what is rec membership slash holiday party, and why do we spend fifteen thousand dollars on it?
Rec membership, so, corporate membership, similar to what the rec center offers to all of the corporate employees, as offered to the city of Celine, so that the employees of the city of Celine can get a membership at a discounted rate, and the employee pays a portion of it, same as a corporate, and then that's part of the city picks up the rest.
And then, I think it's two lines down, wellness committee, what exactly is our wellness committee and what do they do?
The wellness committee is part of our insure, our health insurance, part of our program, to say that we, you know, that we participate in a wellness committee, and that wellness committee supplies, it's the group of employees, that, that they provide us lunch and learns, they provide us the health fair each year, where we can get our flu shots and stuff like that, so...
Okay, and then I have one last question, and it's, it's coming from Terry. Terry, do we have any numbers about elections? When I was at MML convention, people were just shocked that we are still only doing two-year election cycles. Have we explored what a four-year election cycle would do for our numbers at any point?
Well, I mean, so, not since I've been here, I don't know if that was something that, that would, that would be more of a, something that the charter, I mean, that would be something that council would want to initiate.
If I may, and Mr. Gierbaum might be able to speak to this, as would former councilwoman Mary Hess, but I believe there have been multiple ballot proposals to extend the term of office for mayor and council member from two years to four years, I don't have the election results in front of me, but I think they failed miserably. Now, that was some time ago, but it has been entertained by the voters.
It may have been ten years, it may be time to reconsider, nothing says that we shouldn't.
No?
Thank you.
Did you want to comment on the rec center issue?
No, I'm just gonna say that Mickey Joe, I think, did a fine job, but, I mean, that's part of the, the benefit package for those folks, for those employees, that the, the city pays a portion, and then the employee picks up the, it's, it's very generous to the, to the employee, for sure, but a good, a good program nonetheless, and then the other portion is a small portion, a very small portion, I think we spent maybe seven hundred dollars total, but on the, the Christmas party for the, all the city employees.
I didn't think that far across the country.
No, 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 I know that, but I'm just saying carved out of that piece, and then, of course, the wellness, the wellness committee, I think, has, has been, been vital and helping, I think you could ask a number of our employees that have, that regularly attend the lunch and learns and such, that they have been very beneficial in helping them with, to live a, a better, healthy, or healthier lifestyle.
That's fine, thank you.
Mr. Har, anything else?
No further questions at this time.
Okay, Ms. McCollum?
Um, I don't, I just, I just, just now saw it, but the mosquito control, can you talk about that, is that just picking from a different bucket and putting it in a different place, or is that a new item?
So, we, the, yeah, they have, no, they're not, they're not spraying, they're the briquettes that they put in the storm sewers.
Okay, I think that's it for me.
Right, while we do this, we've got about a little more than fifty, or a little less than fifty minutes left, Riley, do you want to come to the podium and maybe speak to the Main Street request, and what you're gonna be looking for as an organization moving forward?
Yeah, me and Jill will both.
Yeah, absolutely, so Riley is the staff member, and Jill Durnan as the, the board president.
I'll play a little bit here.
Okay. And Riley, if it's more convenient for you and Jill, you're welcome to grab the cordless mic, it's over by the monitor with the television over to my left, it's your choice.
Are you serving pepper, Riley?
I don't know why. I don't know why, but it's pretty good.
Yeah, I think. Are you ready? You want me to play right here, Chase?
Yeah.
You have a sound?
I want you to turn the audio up on that.
That'll hear for some reason. Yeah, can we do that? Put the mic up on the laptop. Okay, I must put it right there, and I see if it'll work, okay. Let's try that out. No, that's frustrating. Yeah, you might just need to do that, we'll just unplug it.
There we go.
Yeah, I'll see if that works.
Celine Main Street really does a lot for our Celine community, it brings a lot of people together through different events throughout the year, which ultimately affects us as a business, because we get to meet our clients out there and...
Can you hear that at all, or no?
Yeah.
You can?
Connect us with other businesses.
Well, anytime we can get our face in front of the customer, and the customer's face in front of us, I think is an asset to us, so, it's a no-brainer for us.
Celine, the downtown part is the heart of the town, it's the heart of the community, and I think by investing in Celine Main Street, which concentrates on the downtown, it just seemed like a perfect match for me. It's important to recognize your community as a place that you live, and in my case, it's also a place where I work, by being a sponsor, I'm, I'm part of that involvement, and that helps invest in my community in a way that I might not have been able to do.
When we came down here as a company, Quantum Signal, we, when we bought Mean School, it was in part because we thought it was a unique environment, and in part because we loved Celine as a city, and we saw the downtown of Celine as a, as an opportunity, an opportunity where we could help build something and grow something, and so, investing in downtown Celine was an opportunity to become part of something bigger and better, and I think as far as Main Street goes, the Main Street organization believes the same thing, and so, I think that Main Street's an asset, and something that means a lot, and something that has an opportunity to really make a huge difference in the Celine community, and its surrounding communities as well.
Well, it takes a lot of success to build a thriving community, it's a system of people working together for a common good. The staff and volunteers at Main Street have tremendous experience in putting on great events and business functions that we could never replicate, that kind of energy on our own.
We like to be a good neighbor in the community, and we find that Celine Main Street is a good and one of the important organizations in the city, where our investment also benefited us from being visible with all the music festivals and, and the events that is going on downtown, and combined with other organizations, with the schools and the city chamber, we feel like it's a, it's one of the important organizations to be called.
In any community, there's a lot of organizations and groups, and a lot of worthwhile organizations and groups, we were looking to invest in something that shared our vision for the downtown of Celine, something that actually was looking to grow the area, and growth was happening in the downtown, and thus, Celine Main Street is an organization specifically targeted that, and thus aligned with our, with our goals and our, and what we're thinking about for Celine itself.
Well, I feel that Celine Main Street really gives us the most benefit for the money that we provide, if you want to help your business grow, you ultimately want your community to grow, and your community to be successful, and Celine Main Street gives us the opportunity to do that.
Part of Bank of Van Arbor's mission is to support our communities and people and the businesses within them. Main Street's a perfect example of businesses that tap into the community and is making a real difference. We enjoy participating as volunteers, and always have fun seeing our customers in the community, we live, work, and play here.
I mean, I just think the, the more people that you have invested in this program, you get a stronger downtown area, which only makes Celine better.
You can volunteer, you can give money, you can help with the events, you can be on the board, like I am, and I think that if you don't get involved, you don't know what's going on in your community, and I, I think that your community would sort of shrivel up and die if there weren't people that were active and caring and so forth, and being involved with Main Street, I think that's part of it.
Yeah, thank you to Chase for putting that together for us. We've got a couple of slides that show the total investment in downtown Celine since we've become a Main Street community, I wanted to thank city council for allowing us to come and just give you a presentation about what we do, and to kind of review our five-year plan going forward with, with the city. I'm Jill Durnan, I'm a business and a property owner in downtown Celine, and I'm also the president of the board. Just to give you a little bit of a history, back in two thousand and ten, I joined the BDA, the Business Development Association, which was a committee with the city, and we knew that going forward, the EDC funds that were designated for downtown development were gonna be expiring, so we started researching ways to continue to keep our downtown vital, keep all of the events that were going on all the time, and we researched the Michigan Main Street program, we found that it was a good fit, it provides the foundation that drives locally-driven initiatives aimed at revitalizing downtowns by leveraging local assets, local enterprises, and community pride, and so, it gave us a good foundation, a good structure for our organization, but it did come with requirements, to be part of the program, we have to hire a full-time director, which we did, and we also have to create a diversified funding sources, and Michigan Main Street suggests that thirty percent of our budget comes from city support. We were in the associate level for one year, that's when we learned everything about the Michigan Main Street program, we applied for the select level, and we achieved that in two thousand and twelve, and in our first five years with the program, we received many services from Michigan Main Street, we received a market study, communication program, numerous design services for our downtown building owners who wanted to update their facade, they were given free design services for that, and then this year, we became master level community, since we've been in the program for five years, there are only twenty select and master level communities in Michigan Main Street, and I'd like to hand it over to Riley.
Yeah, well, hello, Michigan Main Street actually began in two thousand and three as a national Main Street center coordinating program, at our beginning, two thousand and twelve, Michigan Main Street was housing the Michigan State Housing and Development Authority, and has transitioned now into the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. One aspect that's really unique to Celine Main Street is that it's been nationally accredited for actually all five years, that it has been a select level in the Main Street community. Michigan Main Street and National Main Street use Celine Main Street across the country as an example of a highly successful Main Street community. In two thousand and sixteen, Celine Main Street was selected as one of three Michigan Main Street communities to be selected as a part of a national Main Street pilot program. This four-point refresh program is highly effective, is four highly effective Main Street communities, and is to be used as examples around the United States. This new program will focus on economic development projects through strategic growth.
Yeah, now that technical stuff's out of the way. We, as a, as a community organization, we've really had a great learning curve over the past five years, for the first three years, we were very event-centric, and I think that was the face of Main Street from, at the beginning, was all of our events, we inherited most of them from the city, we inherited Summer Music Series, Winter Fest, and Be Blumen, from the SDMA, we inherited Oktoberfest and Ladies Night Out, and we worked hard over these years to make these very high-quality events that benefit the community and also support our organization. The past two years, we focused mainly on the construction project that was to come, and we went through, and then also business retention, we paid and hired a structural engineer to come and speak to the building owners, and to assess their current status of their buildings, give them ideas of ways to protect their assets during construction, we held workshops to educate our business owners on ways to minimize the effects of the construction project, we also hired experts to come and give us, to guide us through the whole construction project, and out of that plan, we came up with the Pay It Forward program, which was a whole campaign designed to keep the downtown Celine in the forefront of our community's minds through a raffle, and then also a Meet Me in Celine campaign. Going forward, as Riley said, Michigan and National Main Street are gearing more towards economic development, and we're doing the same, we created a sign grant program, new for this year, where we'll give five hundred dollars to any business that will match up to five hundred dollars for a new sign for their downtown business, we actually hope to expand that into a facade grant program going forward, so those that have received the, the design services can actually implement those new designs on their buildings, we joined with the city, and their community recruitment team to help promote new businesses in town, and we also paid for a parking improvement plan with a local property owner. I handed out to the city council the five years, years one through five, for our corporate sponsorship program, our volunteer hours, and also the private investment in downtown Celine, as you can see, community support continues to grow, which is not the norm for this type of an organization, volunteer hours are stable, and business and property owners continue to invest even through construction. A forty thousand dollar annual investment outside of the Christmas decoration allocation from the city would help maintain stability and sustainability with our organization, it would assure National and Michigan Main Street, as well as other local entities, that the city is committed to Celine Main Street, we aren't asking for more money, this is the average we have received during our first five years. Celine Main Street can garner community support for our events through our corporate sponsorship program, but we can't ask businesses to cover our overhead or programs that might be perceived as a city rule. Celine Main Street needs funds for new programs, parking improvements, physical improvement grants, recruiting new businesses, as well as other services we provide to the city. We're reviewing past letters of support from our application to be in the select level, we feel Leslie Kneehammer said it the best, quote, "Great communities don't just happen, it takes commitment from a large group of people over a long period of time to create a sustainable and active environment of citizen involvement." Celine Main Street has proven to be a vital organization and stakeholder within the community, and we need the ongoing financial investment from the city to ensure a successful future. So, at this time, we'll entertain any questions from you.
Unfortunately, cousin, I've got a...
Just under the wire.
I gotta transition to the regular meeting, Jill Riley, will you or both of you be able to attend our next work meeting, beginning at six PM, two weeks from tonight?
I can, are you being...
Okay, you'll both be able to be there, so, we'll have you plan to, to sit with us at the dais or at the circular table, and at that time, we can, or I will have both of you entertain questions and concerns from city council, but we appreciate your time this evening, it was an excellent presentation, and I understand from taking a look at the audience that you brought a lot of friends and supporters with you, and we appreciate that as well, so, thank you. We're gonna transition now to public comment for this work meeting, under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, may comment or question to city council, this public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person, anyone who would like to speak is requested, but now required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, and I noticed, I was asking about, wondering about the sidewalk program, I know the city put about two-hundred thousand dollars into shaving down some of the sidewalks, but then they said they were gonna take a quarter and start repairing some of them, and I noticed that there's hardly any money in there. Also, on behalf of the cemetery, I noticed that on page of, the, page sixteen of twenty-six, there's salaries of twenty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars, but if you get down to sick vacation time, fringe benefits, ER tax cemetery, which I don't know, that comes up to eleven hundred, eleven thousand, one hundred and fifty out of twenty-three thousand, and I'm going, that's interesting. Okay, the other thing is, I noticed as far as parks, there's a hundred thousand in the salt, but I was wondering what was happening... as parks, there's $100,000 in the salt, but I was wondering what was happening to the Canterbury Park drainage problem. I think there was going to be a drain put back last year. There's cemetery, as far as, the perpetual care fund has lots of money, and I'm still hoping that the cemetery task force will address the stained glass windows and the mausoleum. I've requested that for 25 years. It's on the national register. They have been rotting, and we're going to have, and that apparently has been on the program for 10 years. So I'm hoping that the task force will address that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. And actually, you should confer with staff, because we discussed actually our last council meeting with our DPW director, what our approach and strategy is going to be moving forward to resolve outstanding deficiencies. No, it's quite all right, within our sidewalk inventory. And I was reminded by the clerk that the cemetery task force meets next week. It is a public meeting, so if you'd like to attend and make comment, you are more than welcome to do so. The other issues could be addressed through the city manager's office or through the treasurer's office. They would be more than happy to get you the information that you require. Are there additional comments at this work meeting? No, then the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:34 PM.
Move.
Moved by Gierbaum, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mitchell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries. We'll be starting our regular meeting in two-